Promptly at 7:30. My name is Doug Newsbaum. I'm with the Department of Natural Resources. We're here tonight, this is the second of three public meetings on the Williams Dam study we are conducting. For those of you that were here on the first meeting, welcome back and.
We can't hear you.
All right, do you want me, is that any better? You want me to start all over again?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Doug Newsbaum. I'm with the Department of Natural Resources. And tonight is the second of three meetings for the Williams Dam feasibility study that we're conducting. Tonight, the schedule is our consultant SWCA will do approximately a 50-minute presentation, followed by a little over an hour of questions and answers. So please hold all your questions until that time. We have a couple mics that we'll be able to carry around. So as I know there was an issue the last time hearing everyone's questions. So hopefully this time, everybody will be able to hear all everyone's questions and the answers. So with that, I want to introduce Ross St. Clair, and he has a team here that's conducting the study for the state. And we'll get started. Thank you.
All right, thanks everyone, and good evening. Thanks for taking the time to come. These public meetings are set up. It's an opportunity to engage with the public, receive feedback, come to some answers, and make sure that this is a decision that's made objectively as we look at the alternatives that are proposed here for Williams Dam. With that, again, I'm Ross St. Clair. I'm a water resource engineer with SWCA Environmental Consultants. We've been working with the DNR related to Williams Dam since spring or summer of 2024. I recognize several, quite a few familiar faces from the first public meeting. If you recall, that meeting was very much an introduction to the study, to provide an overview of the scope that would be provided and the tasks that would be completed. We are approximately the halfway point, or a little bit beyond the halfway point of this study. So tonight, we do have a better depiction of what the alternatives that are proposed are, and then the study findings to date. So with that, we'll work through those this evening. Building on that, we're going to have an opportunity just to step back a little bit, look at the background and history of Williams Dam. We will repeat a few things from the first public meeting, especially for those that weren't able to attend. Get into the study findings as they are to date. Alternatives that have been proposed at this time. Provide ample opportunity for public input and engagement, and then wrap up with next steps in the timeline looking forward. So if all of you are here, you're familiar with the Williams Dam. It's in Williams, Indiana, in southwest Lawrence County. The dam is on the east fork of the White River, impounds water more than 15 miles upstream of Bedford, and we'll talk about that in more detail. A drainage area of just under 5,000 square miles. The dam itself is roughly 300 feet long, 17 foot tall, and has a hollow reinforced concrete spillway. In addition, there's a powerhouse structure that sits there for the legacy, you know, electric power generation that was there. There's also historically a supplemental coal burning facility that was there, and some remnants of that that still remain. There's an earthen levee that extends some 900 feet upstream along the east bank of the river to prevent normal and minor flood flows from overtopping the upstream embankment, making its way through the field to the southeast that's depicted in the picture on the right. And going forward, I wanted to just look a little bit at the history of the dam itself. Many of you I know are familiar. It was constructed in the early 1900s. It was a hydroelectric dam powering the local community in part, and then also some of the nearby limestone quarry operations. The next bullets, I won't read through those, but what they highlight are some of the various repairs that have taken place through the decades. There's also highlighted the decommissioning of the dam in the 1950s. Removal of partial of the powerhouse in the 1960s that took place. We want to highlight the last attempt that was taken at rehabilitating and repurposing the dam took place in the roughly 2013 to 2018 timeframe. An east coast company looked at several former hydroelectric dams in Indiana for purposes of once again generating electricity. In that case, they were potential clients looking at the city of Bedford, also Crane Naval Base. That effort and that venture fell short in 2018, when at the time, at least that pursuit proved that it was unviable in terms of how much electric power they were going to be able to generate with the rehabilitation of the dam, weighing that versus the intended cost or the anticipated cost of those improvements. There was a rather extensive inspection of the dam that took place in the mid 2000s. And with that, one of the things that they did is they not only looked at what are the repairs to immediately rehab the dam, but if, pardon me.
We don't have sound in that other spillover room. Can you hold on for a second? I'll try to get the sound in there so those folks can hear it.
Sure. We're going to pause. We've got some folks that are listening in from the adjacent room. We're trying to get them tuned in here so they can hear as well. Thanks for your patience. Okay, I think we're ready to reset here. So briefly recapping, I wanted to highlight in the mid 2000s, part of a previous study that was done is they not only looked at the most immediate repairs needed for the spillway and the powerhouse at the time, but they looked at that as more of an aspect of that study was if we want to look at this dam to remain for another 100 years or for the long haul, what are some of the rehabilitation efforts that we think would be necessary to do so? And so in that, they looked at the concept of replacing the headgate racks and the stop logs there with steel bulkheads. They looked at as well replacing or filling the entirety of the spillway and the powerhouse with either grout or cellular concrete. They looked at repairing the levee upstream to prevent routine overflow of that bank and through the adjacent field that would, you know, compromise the dam itself if that river to reroute to the south. They as well looked at some of the additional concrete deficiencies that they noted at the time. And although the cost estimate that was provided at that time is dated at this point, now close to 20 years old, at that point in time, they did estimate the cost of those repairs at $3.8 million. So that was, that was one of the talking points from the first one. Again, although that's dated information at this point, it provides a little bit of context as far as some of the past studies that have looked at what the long-term repairs or rehabilitation would be needed for the dam. And that's what was presented prior. And then, as we know at this point, the DNR owns and operates the Williams Dam and the recreational area surrounding. So I want to move into what the three proposed alternatives that the study is looking into. Those would be no action, full removal, and partial removal. And I'll get into details of each of those in a moment. And then the various study findings related to safety, river water levels, groundwater, and public intake impacts, stream sediment characterization for the material stored upstream, and then the material downstream of the dam. Impacts to aquatic passage, recreational use and passage, as well as the slight look at the economics of not just this dam relates to Williams, but some case studies looking at similar low-head dams throughout the country that have been removed or modified. So that first alternative that we discussed, no action. And with that, that's quite literally what we'd be looking at. Powerhouse and spillway remaining as is. Some notes with that, that the known and for this matter, unknown current and future structural deficiencies would remain. Main point being that at this point, there's no significant or feasible rehabilitation funding that's been identified at the state or federal level to support rehab of this dam. Aquatic recreational passage issues would remain similar as they are now, remain the same as they are now. And those safety concerns that are noted would still be in place, as you can imagine. One thing to note with the DNR, that's they are owner and operator of 155 other dams throughout the state of Indiana, and currently have a roughly $50 million backlog in terms of repair for some of those facilities. The full removal alternative that's been proposed would be removing the entirety of the spillway and the powerhouse structure, as well as the remnant coal burning facilities that were there, or at least grout filling those void spaces underground. In place of the dam would be a low gradient rock riffle. So that's a structure that'd be comprised of small to large-sized limestone boulders to hold grade and to hold the shape of the channel in that section of river where the dam is, spillway is removed. This would provide reasonable aquatic and recreational passage. Provide a low enough gradient that canoeers, kayakers would be able to traverse the riffle that's there in place of the dam, and then the fish species, the aquatic species that we'll be talking about in further detail would be able to migrate upstream or downstream. In terms of additional recreational use at the site, that would remain similar. Still opportunities for walking, picnicking that have been discussed. Fishing would still be present and remain, but it would certainly be altered. We would go from a largely lake environment upstream of the dam, a large, you know, series of plunge pools downstream of the dam to a continuous riverine system that would be more consistently shallow, slightly higher gradient over the course of the upstream at the dam and immediately downstream is the conditions that we would have. Upstream of the dam, we would anticipate that the river would, if you want to say shrink. You know, there's a riverine system as opposed to that lake system. And those overbanks that would be exposed would be new floodplain that would immediately upon removal would be barren sand, gravel, silt over time. And with past experience of other similar dams would be expected to vegetate as a native riparian area. So this first rendering is from the north bank looking to the southeast. You can see the remnant wing wall on the south side of the, or east side of the river that would remain in place likely, but the entirety of the rest of the structure removed in this rendering. This next rendering is taken from the opposite bank, also looking upstream, also with the full removal scenario. So some of the things that highlight there is the rock riffle that's in place with small to large-sized boulders. The goal would be to allow for aquatic and recreational passage and the design of what that rock riffle looks like. Trying to maintain as many similar or slightly altered recreational uses of the site as possible. The next alternative is a partial removal scenario. So in this, the dam would be lowered approximately 10 feet. So a portion of the spillway would remain in place. And then a higher gradient constructed rock riffle would be placed on the downstream side of that spillway. So as a result, you would have a higher gradient riffle or rapid through there. With that, we would anticipate installing larger boulders to again, hold grade and prevent that from eroding away over time. And that's reflected, I think, in the photo in terms of slightly more turbulent water. Still, the goal would be to provide reasonable aquatic and recreational passage. But with that, the lake environment upstream would be somewhat maintained, but at a decreased elevation. So as we get into some of the study components, we've talked about it before. Safety is one of the considerations when we talk about potentially removing a low-head dam. You know, they can be deceivingly tranquil, especially from the upstream. Many times, unless knowing that it's there, you're not able to view them until quite close to the dam. You do have a tendency for an increased current immediately upstream of the dam, which further accelerates that transport. And then the real danger is the downstream, the danger zone or boil zone that has the recirculating current that not only recreational users, but then trees and debris and all of that that is circulated in there and a certain danger that comes with that, if not, you know, respected with the right safety protocols. At the dam itself, on record, there's eight deaths that have been at Williams with additional injuries and rescues, both reported and unreported. Most recently, a death in 2020. In addition to the dam and consideration of safety there, did want to note the observation deck that is there that's used just for observation, but then also for fishing and other, you know, recreational uses is noted to be deteriorating to a degree. So it's just a consideration when we talk about safety and more so folks' use of that, especially during high-water events. and more so folks' use of that, especially during high-water events. With this slide, well, without getting too much into the weeds, but it is a really important aspect of this study is what do the water levels look like under these various alternatives? And so we are looking at these in addition to other storm events. We're looking at what normal flow conditions would be, low-flow conditions or middle of summer, driest period of the year, and then flood flow conditions. And for this slide, we're looking at 100-year, 1% annual chance storm event. Under all scenarios, obviously, the no-action alternative results in water levels remaining as is. The normal flow and low-flow periods are quite similar, so I'm going to lump them together. But as we look at a full removal scenario, water levels at the dam for a full removal or under both normal and low-flow conditions would be between 15 and 16 and 1/2 feet lower water level immediately at the dam is what you would see on a typical basis. Moving upstream at Stumphole Bridge Road, that water level would decrease between 10 and 11 feet. And then as we move all the way up to Bedford, we're looking at a water level decrease under the full removal scenario between 2 and 1/2 and 3 feet. From that, it highlights the, you know, extreme length that this impoundment has on East Fork of the White River. And this slide is trying to highlight that. And then as we move into the partial removal scenario, it's less exaggerated because we'd be removing less of the dam in that scenario. But at the dam itself, between 7 and 8 feet of decrease between the normal and low-flow condition. At Stumphole Bridge Road, between 7 and 8 feet of decrease. And then up at Bedford, we're still looking at 2 and 1/2 to 2.9 feet of increase. We actually found that the water surface impact all the way upstream at Bedford is the same for a partial and for a full removal scenario, based on the hydraulic analysis that we ran. Now, when we look, turn the page and look the opposite of that at a flood flow scenario, the 100-year, we have negligible impact. I mean, in many of those same benchmarks, we have zero impact up or down that would have. It's not a flood control structure. And so by the time you've got a 100-year storm and that river has, you know, reached over its overbanks out into the floodplain, cross-sectional area that that river is utilizing at that point is quite a lot more significant and the impact of the dam is not felt at that point. So it's really just a scenario where normal low-flow periods, even smaller storm events, where you're going to see that water surface difference as opposed to the flood flow condition. Now this slide, one of the, in addition to the water levels in the river under these different alternatives, we wanted to look at the groundwater impact and then the private and public wells in the area, as well as the water intake at Bedford. And so that's what these next two slides speak to. So our analysis extended to the Huck Ten watershed, which is a watershed that provided a reasonable boundary or buffer on both sides of the river and extending far enough upstream that determined that it's the likely zone of, you know, potential impact from removal or partial removal of the dam. And so in total, there's 306 wells that were logged under DNR's publicly available database, that's both private and public wells. And of those, we flagged two different scenarios. Those wells that are within the alluvial or the aquifer that's directly impacted by Williams or by East Fork of the White River. So there's surface-fed aquifers, alluvial aquifers. There's 44 of those that were identified and those were flagged. There's an additional 11 wells that were, at least in the footprint of karst features, which have some unique groundwater conditions, and we wanted to further analyze those. In addition, there are 11 major water wells that are within the study area, three different major water suppliers. We wanted to further analyze those. So those 44 wells that were within that alluvial aquifer or, you know, have potential for impact of raising, lowering the water level in the river itself, we further looked then what is the well depth or even more so the screened interval that that well is drawing water from? We determined that if that screened interval is higher than 100 feet deep, there's at least a partial reliance that that well would have on that same alluvial aquifer. If it's at a depth that's greater than 100 feet, it's very likely it's in the bedrock aquifer that would be unimpacted by any modifications to Williams Dam or the water levels in the river itself. We are going to, as part of this study, provide a more in-depth table that details each of these private and public wells specifically, based on well ID, coordinate location so that the public could go and reasonably find the well that corresponds with their parcel and see what the risk assessment associated with that would be. We're still in the midst of those. We have a number of wells that we're trying to manually review, scanned well logs to try to come to better conclusion of where that screened interval is so we can provide a more conclusive assessment of risk associated with that well. Of the, I will note real quick, of the wells that are dug and over top of karst features, we found that all of those were at a depth significant enough that we thought that, you know, beyond the alluvial aquifer that we anticipate, low perceived risk of impact that that would be deeper and therefore not impacted by removal of the river, or removal of the dam. I apologize. The three major water suppliers that we looked at that are identified within the study area are North Lawrence Water Authority, South Lawrence Utility Corporation, and then Hoosier Energy Electric Cooperative. All of these pulling in excess as far as a facility capacity of 1 million gallons per day. We're still working with those utilities to determine what the actual usage, both average and maximum, as those are separate detail than the facility's actual capacity. But we have found that of these three utilities that is comprised of 11 different wells, all of those do appear to be drilled within that alluvial aquifer, so have a screened interval less than 100 feet. So it's reasonable to believe that there's, to some degree, reliance on the river and groundwater fed for that water source. We're going to continue, we just met today with the city of Bedford and South Lawrence, continued communication with them to try to come to better data so that we can more precisely understand impacts that would come from an alternative of either full or partial removal. And also discuss what contingency or mitigation for any risks that would come with an action alternative. So those discussions and communication are going to be ongoing over the next few months as we continue to work towards this study. But I do want to highlight that public water use and for that matter, private water use are part of the details of the study that we're trying to come to a better understanding as we consider what is the impact, both good and bad, of these different alternatives. With that, I'm going to ask John Richardson from SWCA to present a couple of slides related to sediment characterization and then official wildlife.
All right. As one of the tasks we have to do in this feasibility study, can everybody hear me okay? Okay. Is gather sediment samples from the river to see what would happen if the dam would come down. Is there a sediment impact downstream? Both the physical effects of sediment going downstream and also is there contamination issues for the fish downstream? And mussels on the bottom. So IDAM and DNR have a document on file. It's been on, it's been there for a while. That gives us guidance on how to collect sediment and what we're testing for. In this case, our tests are done by Pace Laboratories in Indianapolis. One of the things we're looking at is grain size. So finer sediments are going to move faster than larger sediments. That's pretty easy. Nutrients that are present not only in the water, but in the digested sediment. So they'll take a sample of sediment and they'll digest it in the lab and see how much phosphorus, nitrogen, potassium, and also the next line, metals and PCBs are in that sediment. So we're testing for that. Also, in the water column, biological and chemical oxygen demand because that affects the wildlife and fisheries basically in the stream. If you put a load of chemical, high chemical or oxygen biological demand on that water column downstream, all of a sudden, the fish will start to die. So we obviously want to test for that. You know, in a lake environment, which is upstream of the bay and versus a riverine environment downstream, typically you have less oxygen in the lower portion of the lake environment. So historic stuff that was done by Lawson Fisher back in 2006, they did this very same study under the same guidance and they actually tested more than we're testing for. They looked at oils and greases, along with nutrients, the reactivity of the soils, total, the TOCs is total organic carbon in the water, all the metals that could potentially contaminate things downstream. They found no levels that exceeded the EPA's levels of concern. They did find trace amounts of PCBs just upstream of the dam. And that's exactly where we're testing now because we want to know. Did, maybe they missed a pocket, they found some. So we're testing that very same area again. I just did three sediment samples today out in the river. We end up taking more. So like you said, this month, we'll be testing the sediments. We sent a bunch of them off to the lab today. We'll collect more in the future and get those to the lab, and that'll be imported. The other thing we look at in sediment is capacity upstream of the dam. If we're going to take down a partial or full removal dam, how much sediment is going to go downstream? We've got to know that. So far, the depths have been pretty good upstream. But if the amount of sediment is greater than 20% of the reservoir capacity, that just means we got a big bathtub upstream of the dam. If it's more than 20% full of sediment that's come down the river and laying there, we don't want that going downstream. It's going to be, anything more than that is going to be hauled off to a landfill. And if it, if we do find more contaminants in the stream that exceed EPA limits, then it's going to have to go to Azuris Woods landfill. So that pretty much does it for what our sediment study is up to. Probably finish up and have that at the next meeting, next public meeting. Now I want to talk a little about fish, and I am not a fish biologist. I do study mussels for a living, but I do have some backup in the audience. Dave, speak up if I misspeak, please. The last study the DNR did on the river, they do fishery samples quite often. Dave can talk to that more. But in 2024, they did a study on the river. They selected six locations between Lawrenceport and, I don't know how to pronounce, Hindostan Falls, is that correct? I screwed that probably. They used electrofishing out of a boat and saining techniques. Sading off and gets the smaller ones in the river bottom and the shallows. They found from 27 to 44 different species at different sites. So it was different at every site what they found. But the least amount they found was just upstream of the dam. That 27 different species. It could have been the sampling effort, the sampling day. This is just an idea. 16 species were collected downstream of the dam, but not upstream of the dam in this one study. 14 species collected upstream, but not downstream. So there is some limit to motion just from that one study. But other studies have shown that there's only one, if you look at that species upstream versus downstream line, there's only one that we find typically upstream, which is the pug-nose minnow. And, but there's 14 downstream. And you can see the list there, including blue cats and sturgeon, sauger. Those are probably of most interest to you. So we do have some limitations in what fish are moved upstream by the dam. And obviously, along with fish then, and maybe I'll talk to this in the next slide, is freshwater mussels, which I do know something about, rely on fish hosts in part of their life stage. So they have larvae that get ejected into the fish, and those fish will carry those mussels upstream. That's how mussels move about in a stream. And so the limitations on the fish that can get up the dam also limit the amount of mussels that can get upstream. In this case, we have one endangered species of mussels in the river that, I don't know. Brandt, are you here? We haven't found that endangered species here yet, but it's been historically in this river. So I listed some potential impacts for these actions that we're looking at. If we do a partial, if we, obviously, if we don't remove the dam, nothing really changes in the fish species. There's carp on both sides, invasive carp have made it past the dam. That doesn't change. If we do a partial removal, you may improve the species diversity as you get species swimming upstream, especially the more aggressive swimmers, the bass and the sturgeon, blue cats, they'll make it upstream. Any dam removal would definitely result in the migration of the 14 unique downstream fish to upstream waters and thus hopefully increase the mussel diversity upstream. You may see a decrease in some of the pool species. I just listed gar and shad as one of them, I'm sure there's more. Anticipated impacts on dam removal on fishing, you're going to have to hunt more for your fish. They're not going to be jammed up at the dam as they move upstream. Right now, it's, you know, fish gather at the lower part of the dam and it's easier to find them. Obviously, if you take out a dam, those fish are going to seek out other pools, other places to hide. It'll be definitely make fishing harder. All right. Anticipated impacts on other wildlife, there's not really a whole lot going on with other wildlife. We changed the setting for riverine. Step up to the mic, I'm fading away again, I apologize for that. If the dam is partially or fully removed, you lose that impoundment, that impoundment habitat where some birds of prey might fish, like eagles and osprey. But what you'll do is disperse those birds. They'll move up and down, they'll find other pools. You probably will see an increase in freshwater mussels. The mink, otter, raccoons, those types of riverine bank animals will move up and down easier. And you may see an increase in songbirds and especially shorebirds when the sediments are still exposed. Shorebirds love those sediments. But over time, as those sediments get vegetated or if we vegetate them right away, you would get songbird habitat and that's where the deer would come down and hang out. Really, it's not a whole lot of change to your wildlife diversity.
We've got a couple more slides that I want to move through and discuss considerations. So under the partial or full removal scenario, one of the considerations would be the de-watering approach for that upstream reservoir. It's something that needs to be carefully considered in that you don't have a drastic drop in water levels and change in pore pressure along the banks that can result in slope instability. So the goal would be to target lowering that reservoir half a foot to at most a foot per day so that that change can take place less rapidly. I guess the next takeaway from this slide is that we're still considering, at this point, the powerhouse, we've thoroughly investigated that in terms of ability to continue to use those headgates to de-water the reservoir. From all accounts, both the racks and the stoplogs themselves are non-functioning. It's to the point on the powerhouse where we've spoken with a few different contractors where even the thought of staging any heavy equipment or machinery that would be able to dislodge those headgates is quite risky of a proposition just with the condition of the concrete itself in the powerhouse. And so we're looking at additional alternatives in terms of how we could go about de-watering that reservoir if that were an alternative that were pursued. A bypass channel on the south side is a consideration that's been brought up and discussed with the adjacent owner. But those are all still preliminary. And again, those are only considerations in place if partial or full removal alternative were pursued. One thing I do want to talk about, and hopefully I can do a decent job of summarizing. One thing I do want to talk about, and hopefully I can do a decent job of summarizing, the geomorphic or the river response to a full or partial removal. I think there's probably a lot of concern as far as the impact that removing the dam has on, not just the downstream of the dam and what that looks like, but especially the upstream. You're going from that lake setting to a riverine setting with an adjacent floodplain. And what takes place in the short time, short term is that, as John mentioned, a degree of those fine sediments that are stored upstream of the dam will be released and would be washed downstream, finding various pools to fill, forming bars, sandbars, things along those lines, kind of in a braided type, not a, not a real structured format. And so sometimes you do see immediately after a dam being removed, it's not the prettiest sight in the world. That's for certain. You get a braided network that's certainly downstream with those sediments settling out in random places and then the same upstream, you know, you've got a, in this case, 15 miles of river that's been under, you know, effectively been a lake bottom for a century and the river is going to take some adjustment. But what we do find over time is that as those fine sediments move through, the coarse material finds its way and settles out and then over time you do reestablish a single thread channel through that, what is now a larger floodplain within the river channel, the existing river channel as it is now. And with that, those floodplains, they have a stored, a lot of times a stored seed bank that comes through and if not there, seed that's migrated from, from upstream vegetates those floodplains. And so in the long term, we find that that stability returns to the reach and those adjacent floodplains are vegetated and stable down the road. I do want to talk about some of the, and make sure that we don't gloss over the recreational uses and importance of the dam and the recreational area around the dam and ends in some of those considerations that go with some of those recreational uses. So we'll start upstream, the upstream boat launch that is there, under a partial or full removal would, would leave that launch inoperable. It would be high and dry, would be the result of that. You know, I talked about that 15 to 16 feet of lower water level at the dam itself. You can imagine that that upstream launch that's there, any, you know, there's going to be an impact there where that's not used in its current form or wouldn't be able to. Boating is definitely going to be a change. You know, you're going to, under normal and low flow, it's probably, it'd be a tough river system to use a motorized boat for. You're going to have periods of higher flow and potentially, you know, just beyond normal flow where you could still operate a motorized boat, but it's, it's certainly compared to the, the lake setting that's there now, going to be a different scenario and much more challenging on that front. Now in turn, opportunities for paddling, for canoeing, kayaking, tubing to that degree, there are improvements on that front, so, but it is a shift there from the motorized boating that's used upstream of the dam for certain. John spoke to it, fishing is certainly going to be altered or less of a concentrated fishing effort that's, you know, upstream of the dam or immediately downstream of the dam and either the, the lake environment upstream or the, the pools that form downstream to where it's again, with the partial or full removal, more of a riverine system where those fish are going to spread out, they're going to find places to hide. And so that's going to impact the, the approach and the, the fishing use of, of the river itself. In terms of just regular hiking access, picnics, slightly altered view that you would see there, obviously if, under a partial or full removal, you might have the dam that's there and that cascade, but access there would actually, could argue be increased with the increased floodplain adjacent to the river itself and then obviously a different setting there without the upstream lake and then the, the dam itself. As we look at, and these are kind of big picture on the surface, looks at economic impacts as far as potentially positive and negative of removing the dam. And we certainly have time for, you know, public input and to expand on these, but as identified today, we've looked at potentially negative impacts of full or partial removal would include those public and private well impacts, the water intake at Bedford and potential impact there. Short-term disruption of the public use during the removal, there's a period of four to six to as much as, you know, it could be 10 or 12 months for a full removal of, of the dam, depending on what water levels do during deconstruction. And so there's a short-term disruption that's there in the, the use of the facility itself. As I mentioned, there is definitely an alteration of the recreational use of the, the site surrounding the dam, especially in terms of fishing and boating, that, that changes. And then we have to consider the upfront removal cost if we're, we're trying to compare apples to apples. In terms of potentially positive impacts, and some of these are, you know, we've got this potentially negative impact from removing the dam, what's, what's the alternative that may present? So we do have altered recreational opportunities for tubing, kayaking, canoeing, riverine fishing. I've got some case studies that I wanted to run through with some Midwest and Indiana projects where that's been the case. Perceived or even in this case anticipated realized cleaner, free-flowing, safer river water does tend to draw people to the resource. And I know that's, on the opposite side of that is, the dam is a, a aspect of the river that draws people to the resource as well. So I don't want to overlook that. Reduced or eliminated long-term operation and maintenance cost is a reality of it, the liability insurance and costs that come with maintaining that dam. And, you know, certain levels of revitalization that have been experienced by other communities with dam removals in not just the Midwest, but Indiana, potential opportunities that might be there. So in terms of, of dam removal in the Midwest, Iowa is really, I would say, at the forefront in terms of the number of dams, lowhead dams. So in these cases, the original function is no longer present and those are being removed or modified. And what they're finding is trying to, again, to alter the recreational use of the facility as opposed to just chalk it up to, well, folks aren't going to come here anymore because the dam is gone. And so in some of these cases, I try and point out in this particular project on the, on the Sioux River in Iowa, they did install, they had a full removal of the dam in place. They did put in a, more of an arched rapid riffle through there that is conducive to aquatic and recreational passage. And surrounding areas, they've have additional picnic and recreational grass areas that they use and they've tried to make this a focal point for the community, again, unaltered, but still for this community, a feasible alternative on that front. In Logan's Port, Indiana, a more recent removal, one the DNR layer program was involved with. Another example of a full removal, where in this case, they've had, I saw on the Eel River in northern Indiana, 15 fish species that were not previously found downstream of the dam that have migrated to upstream reaches of that same river. They have seen newly revealed floodplain that has become vegetated, is used for recreational use. They've had also a kind of a revitalization effort in that community. They've got adjacent outdoor gym and tennis courts and basketball, things like that, for that particular community fitted the need and was part of their revitalization plan. The last dam that I wanted to highlight was one that's in Muncie, and I wanted to highlight this one because it was unique in the fact that the American Water Company utilized the pool upstream of this particular dam for a raw water intake. And part of the, the study that went into that determined that it wasn't feasible for full removal of that, that dam, and so it was a partial removal and the placement of a rock riffle in the downstream end as highlighted in these two photos. And, and the grading of that was set so that again, they can meet some of the aquatic and recreational passage goals, improve safety, but still maintain in this case, the utility use of, of that impoundment area. So with that, if no one else at the DNR has anything to add at this time, we are going to, we've got two microphones that we're going to distribute through the room as you raise your hand. And if, I'd ask if you could, please state your name, your association with the dam and then provide your, your question and we'll do our best to provide an answer. If we don't have that, take note of it, follow up, collect contact information so that we can, again, continue to engage and receive the feedback. So with that, any questions or input? It's a good question. Doesn't look like it. There you go. Yeah. And on that front first, anyone that was in our overflow area, feel free to come into the, the main area if you do have a question to present. Yes, sir.
Also, we please state your name and answer your question, please.
My name is Brandon Grant. I live on Supple Bridge Road, which is north of, or west of, the east of North and West Water, which is close to all. So a couple of things that didn't need to be covered in the slides that I have questions on is what's the perceived impact on possible issues or concerns with Blue Springs Caverns? And so first question, and what do you think is going to happen with, it's maybe not exactly due to our circumstances, but the limestone, geology of our areas, what do you think is going to happen with sinkholes and possible erosion around?
Okay, thank you. So that was actually the particular location that caverns brought up at our previous meeting after, when we had some of the private discussion and we, we did look into. And I could provide as far as the water level impact, a more precise to that station there, but adjacent stump hole bridge, we're looking at, under normal conditions, roughly a 10-foot drop in the water level there along the river. Does that help answer the first piece of that?
So, and you would be there that that might take your concerns? And the overflow room, they can't hear, so that's the that might.
Okay.
So what would you have to do?
Well, we get to know each other.
So I guess the question was more pertaining with, how do we, how do we think that the, the water that's in Blue Springs Cavern as well as surrounding in the Lost River, how is that being fed by the White River or how is it feeding into the White River?
Okay. Yep.
For the first question.
Thank you. So we are looking at some of the secondary impacts to tributaries that are, as a result of the impoundment, have more routine or perennial water. It'll be more as part of the steps between here and the end of the study. We've analyzed the river itself, water levels, but we want to look at those impounded wetland areas, those impounded tributaries that come in, caverns. But if they are within that impoundment zone, and, and the elevation that they sit is within that, that impacted drop, there would be an anticipated decrease in, in normal or perennial flow through those areas is a reality of removing the dam.
Ross, over here, could you just repeat the question so that I'll take care of the folks downstairs?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Beth, I live in Williams. I wanted to know with the current administration and the cuts that he's doing across the board, how are the options, how is the option to keep the dam open even feasible? Won't it cost more to keep it open and would it take it out?
So on that front, yes, correct me if I'm wrong, but question asked, cost of repairing the dam versus removing the dam, how did the, the cost of those two compare? Is that accurate?
I just want to know, like, with this administration, that is, and the cost of the, because.
How much do you, do you guys pay for it? Does it need the urban resources? And if you pay it all, that's it? I don't know. If you need the urban resources, it's all about the tax, you have to have a budget in our presence. So exactly how are you going to get this covered? Either way, whatever.
So to, to answer the, the question here, yes, it's a DNR owned dam. So these expenses and under any of these alternatives are the owner making these decisions. As you stated, it is taxpayer dollars. As far as the funding for each alternative, we're pursuing what those options are and that's a, you know, an evolving situation, the state and the federal level. So I don't have an answer today as far as each alternative and what portion of those funds come from where, but as we work through this study, looking at the funding options and that goes, does play into the feasibility of each of these alternatives will be played out and spoken to in the, the final report. Thank you.
Thank you. What do you?
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm a freelancer water handler. I have two questions for you. So the first question is, you said that after removal of the dam, it's going to be, short-term, there's going to be a lot of disturbance to the surrounding area and in long-term, the balance will be restored. Do you have any idea, how many years is that, in the short term or long term?
John, do you have a, so the, to recap the question, we, we, in the main presentation, talked about some of the short-term disruptions from removal of the dam and the upstream and downstream reaches, but the anticipation of the long-term, more stable, vegetated reach would, would be restored and the question is timeframe. Take it on. Thank you. Go for it.
So I know, say it again, that every acre of wetlands that's destroyed, it has to be replaced with, replaced with three acres. What is the plan to replace the wetlands and how many acres of wetlands do you anticipate getting destroyed?
So the add-on question was related to wetland impact or any of these areas that would be de-watered to whatever degree, streams or wetlands. What's a repercussion for that or any mitigation that's, that's required for that? On that front, John, I'll ask if you come and join me. That's why I brought you along. To start though, in terms of the, the response time, I, I will say that, I, I can't stand up here and say that that's a, a six month, that's a one year, that's a five-year response, but it is gradual and incremental is, would be my, my best response. I don't know, John, you have any additional insight on that as far as if we want to put a timeline to it?
The truthful response on your question, Joe, is, oh, the truthful response is it's an unknown, okay? It may be a few years if enough floods reset the stream, or it may be 10 or 20 years. It's all depending on how much, how many flood stages the river goes through to reset itself and build its banks at an appropriate level. That's the right answer. As far as the wetlands, the wetland question that came up, I.D.M. and, and the Corps of Engineers currently require a two-to-one mitigation for emergent wetlands, three-to-one for scrub shrub wetlands and four-to-one for forested wetlands. We have not looked at the potential wetlands in this study as far as the help. We have not looked at the potential wetlands in this study yet, as far as the help. I'd be the guy out delineating wetlands, so, and I haven't done that yet. In fact, I dug one hole today to look at one area, but, no, we haven't addressed that question yet. There may be appropriate scenarios where mitigation is not required, but at this time, we're not even making a decision on which direction we're going yet. We're trying to collect as many facts as we can, so that the administration, the state of Indiana can make a decision what they're gonna do with this dam going forward. Are they going to just leave it as is? Are they gonna fix it? Because it's not gonna last forever in its current situation. So we have to make, we have to provide them documentation, science, as good science as we can get, so they can make an informed decision. And that includes public opinion, and that's what we're trying to get to tonight.
Maybe just one thing to add to that, in terms of the mitigations there, I think there is precedent that's there, as far as a non-mitigation scenario, if it's, the work through the Army Corps is completed under a nationwide permit for dam removal, but we've, from experience with other low-head dams, found that that's even a little bit dependent on the region of the state you're working with, and in this case, the Army Corps or the IDAM agent, as far as how they choose to interpret that rule.
I have a second question. So Ross mentioned earlier Iowa River project as an example of how a dam would be moved, and then a community project was implicated to put it to an end use, recreational, so do you know from that project, who funded that effort, and how much did it cost?
In that particular cases or case studies, I was able to, just to highlight the options as far as what revitalization could look like. On that particular case, I don't know if it was community-funded, state, federal, the dollars that went into that one, or the price tag on those fronts. It was, and, sorry, to highlight the question again, a gentleman asked, as far as the slides presented on Iowa, and the revitalization that took place, if we had a background as far as the cost and then the funding sources of those. And on that particular case, it's not that one, I was not involved with, so I don't have the background on that, but that was just intended to be pulled as a highlight of what one community chose to do when faced with the scenario of removal, to highlight an option that would be there under that circumstance.
Ross, please. My name is Eric, and if you ever come around to Hoosier Energy, could you give me an idea of what these water levels, what they do with that pumping, or would that, the river look like?
Yeah.
Would it look like?
Hi, yes, sir. So, as we move upstream of Bedford, and the question was, as we look upstream at Hoosier Energy Co-op, so upstream of Bedford, what the extended water level impacts are, in this case groundwater impacts, would be there. They do, they do continue to diminish upstream of Bedford, to where the point at the utility that you referenced, it's approximately a foot to a foot and a half, as far as low and normal water level decreases that would be anticipated there. We are working with the utility to try to understand what the groundwater impact as a result of that would be, but in comparison to, say, North Lawrence, where it's a 10-foot drop, you can understand a foot to a foot and a half difference, and the river would be less of a reliance that those groundwater wells would have on a change to the river. As part of the final study, I think some details, maps, tables, that speak specifically to locations along the river in terms of water levels, groundwater impacts would be included. But as we, as we move upstream, in general, the risk, well, impact and therefore risk on many of these fronts continues to decrease, and we, as well looked at, you know, town of Mitchell, by the time you're there, the impact is negligible, if, or hardly zero on that utility.
Ross.
Hi, Nancy, and I've got a question. You mentioned, but okay, I would be, high and dry, so will there be a, for an extension to correct that, if you do go through the, the partial removal? And my second part of the question is, will, will those be able to be run down below the dam with electric motors? And then, as far as the recreation projects, that you highlighted in some of the other towns, like Larsburg and Uzzi, would something like that be tied into this project, should the dam be either partially or fully removed?
Okay, so I'm gonna try to recap those pieces, so to start off, the first portion of the question was related to upstream boat launch, being high and dry. Second part related to motorized or electric motor use upstream and downstream of the dam.
And recreational developments, trying to make it viable.
And then if this, this project or this study would entail details related to recreational revitalization, as part of the alternative of partial or full removal. So this, I'll speak to the extent of this study, this feasibility study, looking at the three alternatives. For these secondary impacts, so I'm in this statement, considering removal of the dam, impacted the dam as the primary. Secondary, discussing water intake at Bedford, groundwater impacts, boat launch, these things that, as a result of the dam being removed, would be impacted. The extent of the scope that we would be providing would be concept level of options, alternatives that might be feasible for the DNR and/or others to implement, you know, based on that change in the river water level. So boat launch being one of those, you know, does an extension or modification of that launch make sense in a partial or full removal scenario? We would be working over the next few months to vet that out a little bit and speak to it. As far as ongoing motorized boat use, it's going to be significantly limited, especially during the drier seasons of the year. You're gonna have variable depth, which you do now, but it's gonna be much shallower on average, and so there's a, you know, a certain risk that comes with that, or a, you know, negative, you know, negative aspect that would impact motorized boating, would be anticipated. And then similarly, the last portion of the question, related to us proposing as part of the study, what those revitalization or options look like, I would not anticipate them to go into any significant detail or final design-type detail, and, but our study will be providing concepts of, you know, altered recreational use, how the site can continue to draw people, how it can continue to, you know, fill the fishing need, fill the boating need, although altered. I mean, so that would be the extent of ours, but as far as putting together a revitalization plan as part of the study, the answer would be, would be no.
Eric King, I live on, just on the north side of Springs.
Okay.
Okay, so I don't know the river right there pretty well, but I run my boat, so we're talking five foot, once this goes down, if it's a full river, we're talking about five foot, lot, right down the river. So with all the holes, have you done a study on, or looked at the depth holes and everything else to the river? But I know it's gonna take, you said maybe even 20 years, could be longer, because it's not really quite shanked out. So people have dry spots, quite a lot, and a lot of big fish, mussels, and other stuff that, I'm just saying, that's the one thing to go on. Another thing is, I've got out there too, so you were asking, saying about checking on the, what we asked, so how will we be able to check out, you can put it online or something?
So the question was related to, first, have we done any type of bathymetric survey, or know what the bottom contours of the river look like through there, to anticipate what conditions are now, and maybe how they would be post-removal? On that front, the answer is yes, that has been provided. We did, the DNR, we worked with them to provide sounding data, which we converted to a bathymetric map, so we have a reasonable knowledge of what the river bottom looked like as of last fall. We would anticipate that post-removal, that changes both quickly upon removal, but then over time, some of the spread-out pockets do fill with sediment, and then with each, you know, storm event to a degree, you move away from what's abraded and kind of scattered river system, with pockets, and rivers over here, and that's over here, to a single-thread channel with adjacent floodplains, is what geomorphic response would be for this river system. So on that front, and then the second part of your question was related to how we, or how private well owners would be able to look at their particular situation in terms of impact. And so we pulled all the data from Indiana's DNR well database, which is a pretty comprehensive database online, that has all the publicly available information as far as well depth, screen intervals, there's a number of other fields that are either populated or not. And we will be including a table in our final study that has each of those well IDs listed, along with the coordinates, so that you could, I know we won't list, you know, this is Joe Smith's well, because I don't, that isn't available on the database, but with map and those wells with the same ID there, so that you can reasonably find your particular location, look at what your screen interval is, see which aquifer that well sits in, and then what we list as the, you know, potential risk, how reliant that, that well is on the alluvial aquifer that's fed by the river. So that would be in our final report. Okay, John's gonna remember the last.
So the third part of your question was the fishing mussels, what happens to them when the river goes down? The river goes down pretty quick when you do a dam, but lots of personal experience with muscle and fish recovery operations. So when they're lowering a river for power supply, looking at the intakes and their power supplies, they often do repairs, they lower the water table, or in a dam removal, you can control the release, and then you have teams out on the river rescuing fishing mussels, and you throw them back in the water, place them gently back in the water. Sorry. When you find thousands, you basically dump them back in the river. And that might be a few days, that might be a few weeks. I've been on jobs for three, four weeks, where you're just continually picking up mussels as more and more get exposed, or as more come to the surface. Lots of mussels will bury down, their first response is to bury into the substrate, and then as they dry out, they'll come up. And if you're, if you've got a big enough team to cover the area, in this case, it might be a rather large team, you can do it, you can save most of, most of all, certainly the fish, because they flop around, they're easy to see, get them.
That is basically what I'm interested, that's not, not a big deal.
It, that would be a recommendation, again, if our recommendation is the full or partial removal, so there's always the, the no response. Keep that in mind.
And I would say, on our front, one of the next steps, while we've already had early coordination with, with IDAM, the Corps, and obviously with DNR as the owner, but would be to come to a better understanding of what the agency regulations are along there, what's the bare minimum that's required from there, and then beyond that, what's the extended recommendation from the owner, from us as consultant on that front? So, thank you.
My name is Gary, I live in Bedford, and under full dam removal, I'm pretty sure this is gonna impact a lot of private wells in county. It's also gonna impact the water intake of the city of Bedford. Same, I will tell you, while the water comes out of the river, that is usually the city east of our water. My first question, the answer I want, does your study enable the DNR providing the emergency funding to help these people get their wells back in shape, or the city of Bedford, so my taxes don't go up to take care of your project? My next thing is, the water level at the White River Bridge at 135 today was 4.9 feet. I don't buy your setup. I don't care about your songbirds, or most people in this room, fish, they don't care about your birds, but where there's no water, there's no fish. And if it's a 20-year cycle before this river comes back, that's unacceptable. So alternatives like dredging the river prior to the dam removal would be a really difficult thing. The silt level that's in the White River, from the dam to Guster Creek, or let's just say Buda, is, you can walk across the river in most places and not get your waist wet, barely get your knees wet. I rented a four-wheeler across the river in June. You can ask for a rest of sex.
Sure, thank you. So to start with the first one, I believe it was a question related to study, and as we look at the intake at Bedford, and then also those private wells, and what the extent of the study, what's gonna be provided, and then what, what sort of contingency planning or consideration of that would take place as part of the study. So I'll start with city of Bedford and the intake that's there. We actually just met this afternoon with representatives there at the, the intake to discuss, under, again, if it were pursued, a partial or full removal, that would have a, at a low-flow condition, two and a half to three foot of a water decrease during that low-flow period of the year, that's gonna have an impact on the intake. It's already, during a dry year, they may only have a foot and a half or two feet of water that's over that intake, so if you consider that it's two and a half or three foot lower, you can do the math, that's, that's gonna have an impact. And so we were discussing what concepts might be in place to maintain a certain, either scoured or pool that is there, that deeper section of the river that's there, and/or installing some type of a grade control downstream of it to, not to the extent of Williams Dam, but impound water so that, so during that low-flow condition, they're still able to accept or receive adequate water. This study will take those items through concept, what those would look like as far as footprint of any type of improvement, what those approximate cost would be with those type of modifications that would need to take place if, if the dam were removed and water levels changed. So we are ongoing, working with each of the public utilities on that same front, what is, if there is an impact that's anticipated, what, what do those mitigation efforts look like, what, what options would be there? In terms of the private well impact, this, the study does not, it doesn't outline what the contingency is, or what type of additional funding, any type of support, as its scope now, but it is, the reason that we're looking at it, is that the DNR is wanting to make that part of the decision, understand what those costs are, what those risks are, so that they can look at this objectively in its entirety, so that not just public users, but private users are considered in it. And so I can only speak to the extent of the scope that we've been given right now, is that it'll provide kind of the risk associated with, with those private-public users, as opposed to what is the contingency or the funding of any type of support. And then in terms of your, your second question, if you could provide a, maybe a added reference of where at in the river you were making your, your reference to as far as those water levels? Are you talking about upstream of Bedford?
It's at the White River Bridge, it's where the river runs under Highway 37 of this road.
Okay, all right, so.
The boat ramp.
The fact that it's only three, four, five feet deep under normal conditions, isn't surprising to me there, because from our study, what we found is that that is beyond the footprint of the impoundment of the Williams Dam. And so removal of the dam would have minimal, if any, and I would have to look at the precise spot compared to where we determine our, that impoundment length ends, but it's, you're talking about the upstream, again, further upstream you move, less impact of removal that dam would have. And so we're finding. And so we're finding-
I've been there, if you're making that statement. You need to go there tomorrow morning if you're going to call like that.
I'd, I'd welcome you to provide on a map where you're talking about and we can look at that. Well, please, I'd welcome a conversation after, get the specifics, please.
My name is Amy. I'm up here to look. On the seventh well's wider behind. I can hear shot, I can hear music, and that's how I'm coming to the river I've been doing my whole life. Senator Eric Cook has a bill that has passed the Senate. It is going to the House of Representatives right now. He said, "You are aware of this bill." What I hear is that removing the dam will affect wells, correct?
Is anticipated to, yes.
This bill states that if removal of the dam affects wells, or a couple of the things in the river bridge, it will not be permitted to remove the dam. Are you aware of this bill?
I am aware of the bill. I'm not, and the, the general details of it was not part of, obviously, being drafted or it's, how far along it is, and I see Doug turn it around to maybe provide some, but, and maybe the, I think the DNR's owner would be able to speak more effectively on that front.
Okay, well, I'll take his question, and his question, and her question, too. Okay, because, I mean, you talked about deaths in the river as well.
If, if you've got a number of questions, would you be willing to pose them here so the other room can hear too, as opposed to me relaying each one?
Question is safety. Give me anything left there?
Yeah, thank you.
We must have a few questions. That's why I'm here.
Can I have a spot?
Absolutely.
All right, like I asked before, Eric Cook has a bill. This microphone sucks. Is there another one?
Yeah, let me try one.
All right. It still sucks. All right, so are you prepared to wait to make your decision until this bill goes through the House of Representatives and to the desk of the governor?
I'll be honest, we have not discussed that particular bill with the, the DNR as owner as it impacts this, this study, so I can't give you a yes or a no on that front.
It seems as though there's a lot of questions that people are asking that you're not able to answer. So is there going to be another meeting to discuss all this again, or are you just going to make a decision before people have a chance to hear any of these answers?
We do have a third public meeting that's, we don't have a date scheduled for it as part of the last slides, we're talking about next steps and timeline, but yes, an additional third meeting is, is part of it. And, and in terms of the timeline for selection of a preferred alternative, honestly, I cannot speak to that. My, my role in this study is to, to provide the, the scope and objectively the information presented for each of the alternatives and allow the, the DNR and stakeholders that they determine to, to make that decision on, on their timeline.
As I heard in the first meeting, there was going to be three meetings. To inform us, to tell us of the answer of your studies, which do not seem complete at this time, which you agree they're not complete, and then to give us a final decision. Is the next meeting we have going to be a final decision, or is it going to be more information for us?
The study was originally set up so that the first two, the initial meeting would be an introduction to the study. The second one would be an interim with a significant amount of the, the findings in place without a full report yet, but then the fourth one to be, or third meeting to be after the feasibility report was issued. So as our timeline shows here, we're anticipating in June to August, a feasibility report, preferred alternative, March to July. I will say that this timeline is not set in stone. I recognize that this is a little bit fluid, and again, I think before we're done, the DNR might have an opportunity to, to speak to that piece of it as, as the owner, as far as timeline goes. But originally, it was set up at the third meeting that that report would be issued, a preferred alternative selected. But, yeah, so that was the timeline presented, you're correct.
So what I'm hearing is you're not done with all these studies. We're not going to be informed of any other information that you're going to have, and they're going to make a decision based on, he don't know this, you don't know that, we don't know how long this is going to last, so let's just do it and find out. That makes, that doesn't make much sense, because you can't put it back. So I would think we would need to have another meeting to inform us when you do find some answers.
So I would also, I guess, clarify the, the difference between a preferred alternative and a action. There will be no action that takes place between now and the end of this year that's, that's safe to say, and, and funding is well, well beyond that. Again, I'll, before we end, maybe if the DNR wants to speak to the, that timeline, welcome it, but our goal is to continue over the next two months to, to wrap up the scope. I think we've completed in terms of water level, groundwater impacts, those are ongoing things, we're providing the preliminary findings of those, and working towards a feasibility report with more detail on each of those between June and August of 2025.
Yeah.
Doug's here. Thanks, Doug.
Amy, I'll help answer this. From the meeting one, I said this is a fact-finding mission. There will be no decisions made at the end of this report. What will happen is the folks in Indianapolis, executive office, I'm sure it'll go higher than that, those folks will look at this report and see the information in it, and at that time, a decision will be made. It's not, it's not going to be made by anybody doing this report or anybody in this room. It'll be made in Indianapolis in levels a lot higher than who you see standing here now. All we're doing is putting information together that we can supply them so they can make an educated decision on what to do with Williams Dam. And as, as we've said, it's do nothing, it's a partial removal, and it's a full removal. Those are the three options we will provide them, and that's what's going to happen. So nobody knows what's going to happen. We're just giving this info. Well, no, there's no problem, that's the information, that's the information we're having.
Do you know how long the, the dam would last if you did nothing? Did you do a study on that?
Uh, no, but we do know that the dam is failing, but we do not know how long it will last.
That might be a good study to do. If you do nothing, how long it will last? Another hundred years?
Well, I can tell you, it was, final construction was 1911. In 1922, I think they started repairing it. So there's been a 10-to-12-year cycle. Every 10, 12 years, they're working on that dam fixing it. So, you know, you figure it out, I don't know.
The other thing is, you say they're going to go off of your, your findings. Okay, the things that I seen on this screen a while ago, the positives, more kayaking. You know what, there's the same opportunities for kayaking right now as there will be after, if you remove the dam. Same opportunity, so that's not a positive, so throw that one out. Cleaner. How do you know it's going to be cleaner? If a lot of freshwater mussels die, those are what filter the river. So have you done your studies on what the sediment's going to be like if there's less mussels filtering the river? No, you can't, because you don't know. Safer. You've had eight deaths. Which one of those have pertained to the actual dam? The one in 2020 that you highlighted? That was two guys that tried to swim across the river below the dam. That has nothing to do with the dam. A matter of fact, I talked to several people in this room, and nobody can even name one thing that has pertained to the actual dam, except for the conservation officer, as tragic as that was, drowning there. That's the only thing that had to do with the dam. So for you to say it's safer, throw that one out. And the biggest things people do is boat and fish. They don't want to picnic or sightsee, they want to fish, and they want to boat. They have a picnic if they're fishing, and they might enjoy the sightseeing if they're boating, but you're taking away both of those two things that people like the most. And I question your findings on the varieties of fish that you said are upstream and below it, downstream and upstream. It's 30, 30 to 40 foot upstream. I mean, I'm not sure how they can do an accurate exam as they can below the dam when the water is so much lower down there. You can find the fish a lot easier. Like the gentleman said, you can walk across the river most of the time, except for maybe one little channel. So I would just like to think that maybe there might be some more things highlighted rather than the things that you put in your, your, your notes here. And back to my original question, will they do nothing and stop the removal of the dam if Eric Cook's bill goes through? Thank you.
Hey, just, just one quick comment here. So I'm John Spears, I'm the Civil Section Manager for the DNR. And what I do in my, my work at the DNR is really asset management engineering of DNR-owned assets, or it's been determined that we're obligated to fix a certain asset, for whatever the reason, due to various agreements and whatnot. So we have, Ross alluded to it before, we have about 157 dams that are in inventory that the DNR owns, or we do work on in some form or fashion. We also manage the road network owned by the DNR, that's kind of beside the point. I want to talk to 157 dams real quick. When you look at asset management of a dam, and this is, this is very normal, all right? There's a proverb that says, "There's nothing new under the sun." And so what we're talking about right now is all very normal, this is normal, normal dialogue that we should be having. Ma'am, I, I do appreciate your passion, obviously, this is something that means a lot to you and a lot of people in the room, and so we do appreciate the, the public involvement in this and making this decision. I echo what Ross said about, you know, as you see on the screen, it says, "Preferred alternative," okay? And the reason why, right, at least right now for the scope, we're not really considering rehabilitation as of right now or replacement, is because of cost as it relates to managing these other 157 dams across the state of Indiana. Bear in mind that in some of those cases, some of those dams, you know, we have for the total number of dams that we have that are owned by the DNR, anywhere between 470 to 4,000, 700 people that live downstream of some of these higher-hazard structures. And so all that calculus gets put into this decision-making process that we use, to try to figure out which dams do we fund first for rehabilitation, replacement, or in some cases, divestment. And divestment meaning we would, we would remove the dam. And so this is all part of the normal asset management process, and Williams Dam is certainly, you know, it's on our list to address. As far as the condition of the dam, from a dam safety perspective, and again, looking at about 157 of these things across the state, that, that could lose pool really at any time. And so it's one of these things where we're trying to be proactive, we're trying to do our due diligence with studies, engaging you, the public, on these topics, so that we can make an informed decision moving forward with this particular dam. But this is, this is one of many. The dam has had such a history of, of challenges and problems and need for maintenance and repair, significant maintenance and repair, that it's not really a consideration for repla, for rehabilitation, right? It'd be a removal and a replacement. And when we start talking about removal or replacement, history shows that that is usually cost prohibitive. So, you know, it's not, it's not a consideration, at least it's not in Ross's current scope right now, it's not to say that it couldn't be added, but that's kind of what history tends to show. So I just want to make that comment, you know, appreciate the questions and the involvement, but this is a, is a complex problem, and it, it takes a lot of people to understand it and to make sure we got all the, the issues addressed. So I think Ross and his team are doing a phenomenal job at doing this study, and they have a, they have a, this is not their, their first rodeo, so we, we appreciate it. So, floor is yours.
Yeah, are there any more questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Craig?
Absolutely.
Mayor Sam Craig here with the city of Bedford. So I just want to thank all of you for coming to the House for what's taking place here. I think one thing, I look at it a little bit differently than a lot of people here from my position as far as being mayor of the city of Bedford. First thing that we have to realize is we can all give input, and the final decision is not going to be ours. It's going to be made by somebody else. So we've worked with, with DNR some on this, as stated, they were down today. So there's going to be issues. This study was done in 2006, I have a copy of it. So I went over this information. Our intake for the city of Bedford, of course, if this is a total removal, the odds are that we're going to have issues with our intake. That our intake may have to be redone and reworked for us to be able to obtain the water. And, and by saying that, whenever I talk about the city of Bedford, you know, the city of Bedford sells water to East Lawrence, we sell water to Olytic, we take care of everyone in the city of Bedford, a few people actually live outside the city of Bedford that are on our water. So it's going to be something that we're going to have to really work on. I mean, this is going to affect South Lawrence, it's going to affect North Lawrence, this is something that's actually going to affect the whole county if this dam is taken out. But I think that we have to be very cautious on what we're doing to try to work to this. And as I say, my perspective to a point is different than a lot of people here. I have to look at it from the standpoint to be able to furnish all these residents water. One of my concerns, and it may not be a concern of yours, that in speaking with, with DNR, one of my concerns is the fact, if at some point this dam fails and just goes out, what basically all of Lawrence County is going to do for water? So I'm looking at it from, from that perspective as to what the best scenario is going to be for this. I talked with them as far as to, you know, the replacement part of it, that's, it appears, of course, as they've discussed, that's not going to be an option. You know, I asked them as far as to the standpoint, if for some reason, they take so much off of the dam, if this money that they're wanting to use to take the dam out, part of it can be used then to refurbish what part of the dam is left. We don't really have a clear answer on that yet to see if that's an option or not, but as we all know, unfortunately, this is all going to come down to somebody making a decision because of funding. So with that being said, there's a lot that's going to go into this report, and I just want to assure you from my standpoint, that the city of Bedford is monitoring this very close to make sure that we are able, hopefully, to supply everybody with water that needs it, whether if it's today or if it's 50 years from now, from that standpoint. One other thing that I, I want to point out as far as affecting everyone's intakes, is the fact that whenever we're talking today about how much water use we're using, we've, you've talked about that today, and I, I agree with that completely. But the other bottom line is, is we can't just talk about today. We've got to look 30, 50 years from now to see roughly what we think our population, our industry, or whatever may take place, as to how much water we're going to need in that timeframe. Because I don't want to see that there is a fix today, I won't be here to see it, but our children or grandchildren in 50 years from now, all of a sudden we come out and this is kind of a given, and I'm sure you're familiar with it, there are some cities in Indiana that are having a severe water problem. And this is something that I don't want to see that happens to our community, so we have to work to make sure that that doesn't happen. Thank you.
My family has lived in Silverville, going through, for over nine years. My question is, I've heard skirted all the way around. What is happening to these people here, and what is the cost? And what is the cost of the river? And what kind of effects is that going to have on the town?
So I'll provide the, on the-
So the question was, to recap for those in the other room, anticipated costs for repair or rehab versus?
What, what we, we repair, what the cost is, what the cost of the river is.
So...
So, items that are in need of repair or rehab, costs associated with those, and then anticipated costs for a removal scenario. So, I will reference the last time that this, the rehab front of this was looked at in detail in 2005, 2006 report, and that is a Lawson Fisher feasibility study related to the Williams Dam, I believe can be found online. But they looked at not only immediate repairs being needed, but again, if we want this to be here for the long haul...
What do we think needs to be in terms of rehab or improvements to the dam to keep it there? And they looked at the main things were route, or cellular concrete fill of both the spillway, so it's an hollow cavity that's there all along the spillway, and then the powerhouse itself, to keep those intact and from, you know, a failure in part or in full from taking place. And then to a lesser degree, the headgates upstream, which both the racks and the stoplogs that are there of the powerhouse are in disrepair, in some cases missing, replacing those with steel bulkheads, so that water cannot continue to move through the powerhouse. And then the third of those major items was repair of the levee that's along the east bank of the river, which keeps routine and even minor flood flows from overtopping and cutting through that field which, that sand-based field, if that continued to happen, there is a serious threat in the long term, the river could cut a new route and make the dam obsolete on its own. Those things were looked at, and the price tag at that point in time in 2005, 2006 was $3.8 million associated with that. So it's not adjusted for present day costs. We are working with a handful of contractors to get cost estimates. It's not a bidding situation where we're bidding out the project to be completed, but what is your cost estimate for removal of the stand? And we're providing in detail, we have one cost estimate to date, and it was provided as a ballpark cost estimate, given the concept level at that time, and we'll be adding detail to that concept plan and providing to those contractors once again for costs, but the price tag there was between $1.5 and $2 million with the removal scenario. Okay, I'll answer the first. So, what has been, in my experience, or dams in Indiana and the Midwest, after the fact, perception of what took place, good, bad? And I'll say, if you can understand the answer, it is mixed, but I've been in a number of public meetings related to dam removals, and it's been similar sentiment to this on the front end, with the concern for the landscape, the environment that folks have known for most cases all their life, changing, and real questions about what that looks like, and concern for how that changes the day-to-day for them. And so, yes, it's been mixed, both on the front end and on the tail end of it, you know, where you have folks that appreciate some of the changes that come with it, and those that, no matter what I say up here, or what type of considerations we might make, and if there were a full removal or a partial removal action, it's probably still not going to sit well, and I understand that. So that's the truth of it. This is a subject that folks are on each side of it, and I understand, and our goal for this study is to present the three alternatives, what are the facts that we know in terms of impacts, and as has been stated, allow those that have that decision to be made, make it. And your second question?
Second question was, as far as, I can't hear you talk about a full removal, partial removal, and there are three times during this whole discussion, every once in a while we started to handle repair. But then I got the issue of a question, and one of the guys said, "Well, we've been here ten or twelve years and had repairs." So that kind of issue, my question, if we get part of repairing this, what is the air thing? Because it's ancient, it's been a hundred some years, and I don't want to call it ten or twelve years of ash and concrete or whatever. But that is better all the time, we sell a lot of water. I can't believe that this works would have been. And the question is, if we face it, ten or twelve years versus tearing it to the end, and we chance all those, and I'm tired, city, everything, all the, 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 the road, you're going to throw your eye at whatever, any of those, is, 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 is it, it's not easy, just basically, not able to hold anything, except maybe the muscles migrate up to the other stream?
So, one of the questions, and that was the cost to repair or rehab, what were those? And we've talked about what those would be for an adequate repair for, if we want this, you know, if, under the scenario that we wanted the dam to be there in the long term, costly endeavor, and $0.5, $3.8 million. And yes, there is an ongoing operation maintenance expense that's been there through the decades. I think the second part, and Craig mentioned it, that the DNR is, you know, seriously considering is the level of unknown that comes with a do-nothing action, or a, let's just slightly repair to keep it moving along, you know, it's got a void here, let's go ahead and patch that, and then when there's another void, we'll patch that. It is the unknown of, you know, partial or full failure, and what that uncontrolled release of the dam would imply in terms of all the above-scope items we've talked about, groundwater, water levels, fish and wildlife, and going on. So, that's, but with that, I will say that that is why no action is on the table. At this point in time, DNR has not indicated that rehabilitation or expensive repair is a feasible option because of those ongoing costs, and then the lingering unknown that remains with that route, if that helps at all.
Okay, so what is all of these stats, does it have to act, Craig?
I'll ask the DNR if they want to display that, so I'm not going to take the liberty to shed that info. I know what the amount is, but as the owner and client, I will leave it to them if they wanted to distribute that information. Yep, and I appreciate your feedback, and I just want to echo again that the goal of the study is that we look at all three alternatives, present the data objectively, allow the DNR and those that make that decision have ownership to make that. So, I'm not making any of those decisions, trying to provide the data as adequately as we can. Thanks for your input.
I'd like to know something. My name is Deanne Sessary, and my family has owned a foundation for over 60 years in Annapolis. I want to know, in your studies, does it include, you know, takes the drop, can't be prior to that? So, there is a slough area, and that, your studies include that slough area that is river-fed, so it would probably destroy that, all equals the slough there, so...
Yeah, so we, I mentioned, probably didn't speak to that specifically, but those areas that are groundwater-fed, that are watered as a result of the impoundment, and that would be altered, that will be a portion of the study that's revealed some general findings on.
And a lot of ecosystem, that would be destroyed.
And so that, a review of areas like that would be part of the study commentary on that?
What we really want is to say about dam, you could protect our playground, that would help people to understand this stuff too. A lot of people want that back.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
I'm Andrew, I've been fishing in Williams for my whole life, pretty much. And so you mentioned the bowing of the dam, said it'd be dry and unable to use, right? Well, you said a lot of kind of drop from 15 feet too. What's the map of the banks along the river right there? Is that just going to be a new 15 foot cliff? That's going to be a problem, or is there a safety concern in that?
There will be a response where there will be largely bare banks for a period of time, those will, both, some portions remain bare and vertical for a while, some will revegetate on the angle and slope that they are currently, some will to a degree collapse and repair to varying degrees. That is part of the geomorphic or the river response that we would anticipate as that takes place.
I just want to bring that up as I see that as a new stage concern, Rob, by removing the dam, that, on the second question, so, kind of dating up on my, this gentleman's that over here, the ultimate, the ultimate up to him in the, in your study, they don't mention repairing the dam, and would it be better to repair the dam in order to keep the current water intake for better residents and what they're accustomed to, and also keep the current landscape that Williams residents enjoy? Do you expect that?
I won't, so the question again is, and I've talked on certain degrees with different questions, but why is rehab, or does it make sense for that to be an option? And from the DNR's perspective, in terms of the funding that is required with that, and the lack of it for rehabilitation of a dam that's lost its original purpose is limited, or not there in this case, but I do want to state that as part of the study in looking at these three alternatives, they're considering, you know, an action alternative were taken. What's the full, the extent of those impacts, and then what are the reasonable or appropriate mitigation efforts to offset some of those impacts? So, again, it's, one of these alternatives is all pro or all con, it's been presented today, that's, all three have some on both sides, and that would be the goal of the study, is that we can objectively provide that information.
I think it's a little different about which one provides or not, but thank you for your response.
Thank you.
Well, the old $10,000 signatures that I have on the petition, mainly the local people in the area, well, all over the state of Indiana and several other states, will that have any effect on the decision?
The question was, was the local petition that gained the, local and state petition that's been out there, will that have any impact or be considered as part of the study? And I guess my response would be that details of that petition would be included in the study and would be presented, how that factors into consideration, I do not know that answer.
Always trying to look at where your chances of being hooked, and roll through your shit on that, all the way out to teachers for, with the dam around, that, that flooding in the farm fields, you saw through Mark County, Boy County, and one down for the teachers for...
Thank you, so the question was related to downstream flooding impacts, in a full or partial removal scenario.
And the short answer would be that downstream impacts on flooded flooding in terms of adverse impact are very limited, and really could only be measured there at the dam itself, and maybe moving down to the cover bridge. Impacts beyond that, at that point, the water levels will be very similar to existing beyond that footprint, and so, further downstream counties and areas, the impact on flooding that'd be measurable wouldn't be anticipated. And on the flip side of that, I think a common, I won't say common, but a misconception that I've heard before in terms of upstream flooding impact, to remove the dam, are we going to be flooded more now? Well, as the slide related to water surface levels for a flooding in scenario, it's basically the same, and if anything, you could argue that areas immediately upstream of the dam might have less flooding conditions in some of those farm fields. You've got a larger, you've got an empty reservoir or bathtub like we spoke about before that is being filled during that storm event, so your water level increase is going to be much, or is going to be slower than as it is now with that reservoir completely filled, if that helps. All right, we have five more minutes, so we're going to take, one more question, and I'm going to stick around here if we've got a few, and I don't know what time it is, but targeting that 7:30. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, I'm Nancy Bradyian, and I appreciate what the mayor of Bedford said about the water being in gorgeous, so if the dam is, if they decide to take the dam away, there will have to be an alternative, and that will cost the DNR, of course it's all taxpayer money, but it will have to come from somewhere. And I remember a few years ago, going to the Rock, they see that Indiana was wanting to come down and to get a tract, I don't recall how many billions of gallons of water a day, and I think the DNR did not allow that to happen, but I guess my point is, water is paramount on your lives, we all got to have it. We don't want to hit you the way it's to the future, and have it for, yes, for coal and things, which are a lot, a lot of oil there. So, I don't have a question, there's a state, we're clearing that water, the river, and before we have...
Okay, thank you. We have one more over here, I think. Okay, yes, sir.
My name is Willie Brown. How far out do you expect this to be? Because we live in an area where the water system is alive, and we mission, we're going to be in protest, how far out do you expect this to be?
So the areas that we anticipate to be reliant upon removal are largely limited to that alluvial aquifer that we referred to, which is basically the footprint and the immediate buffer surrounding William, or East Fork of the White River itself, and then those tributaries that come off of it. And the map that's shown here, that would be, that would be the blue, which represents the river itself, and then the green tributaries. So those are based on maps that are, based on the maps that we reviewed, in terms of the aquifer location throughout Lawrence County, those are tied with an alluvial aquifer or a surface-fed aquifer that would be impacted if the river level were to raise or lower. And so that, the impact is largely limited, or it is limited to those areas is what we're looking at. Everywhere else, it's reasonable to anticipate, and also the well data backs this up that it's, that those wells are into the deeper bedrock aquifer, that wouldn't be impacted by removal of the dam or changing of water levels. Does that help?
Yeah. So, if by chance somebody... Yeah, so if by chance something does happen, far out, it will be the, be offset, how would you help those groups?
Yeah, and we did have a similar question before. The scope and the extent that I'm providing this study doesn't go that far. I think we're going to have further discussions with DNR and encourage that to be part of the decision-making process. I don't have an absolute answer for you tonight as far as what that looks like. Thank you.
So, we are looking at, this is all downstream that Williams is approximately halfway through the map. And so, you've got a downstream portion of the river and an upstream portion. Let me back out here, actually. This might help put it into, north, I'm sorry, I apologize, North Lawrence is here, South Lawrence. I've got them switched.
And East Lawrence, I'm curious, is Lawrence on Lawrence County?
Pardon me?
I don't, East Lawrence, I don't, there is...
I think that we've indicated that that's Bedford's intake, providing those areas. And so, we're here at the City of Bedford in the intake, here, towards this upstream extent. This, the details of here, both the well impacts, the tables providing it, well IDs and locations of those will be provided in our feasibility report, so that folks can look at individual wells and risks associated. Okay. Do we have time for one more? We're wrapping up here.
One more, one more.
Let's make it a good one. So, those that are within the footprint of that impounded zone would decrease in normal water.
So, I'll, I'll live in that, at the time when they put Monroe in there, or whatever. Before they put Monroe in there, it was, all, like, it was just for a time here. If you take that dam out, and then there is, of, that was, or you saw, or you, or I have, actually, anything else?
Okay, thank you. With that, the open portion, I'll be here for a little bit longer. Thank you for your time. We'll make sure that communication goes out as far as next steps. We are looking at, you want to go through this, Doug, or is it subject to change?
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I do want to say, our next public meeting will be held at a bigger venue. I, I should have anticipated the size of a crowd with the Facebook activity and some of the other things. So, next time, we will look for a larger venue, more comfortable seating, and again, thank you for coming out tonight. We do not have a date yet. It depends on when the study is complete, but look sometime in, probably middle to late June would be my guess.